Michigan Renaissance Festival is about to begin. Tell us which OCTV show you're watching and we'll send you a limited number of tickets while supplies last. Just send a self addressed stamped envelope to 1775 North Lapeer Road and we'll get them back to you. See you there. Huzzah.
I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Planning Commission meeting for August 9th, 2018. Will you please rise? Pay your respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary, can you please note the roll?
Noted.
Okay, I'd like to move to item three, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the Charter Township of Oxford Regular Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, August 9th, 2018.
It's part. It's been moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Spiz. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes. Item five, approval of the minutes.
I'll approve them. I'll make a motion to approve the regular planning commission meeting minutes of July 26th, 2018.
I'll second.
Been moved by Mr. Curtis, seconded by Mr. Noel. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I think they're still lacking on here. We had two motions that had discussion where the discussion resulted in changing or amending the motion. And so it kind of jumps, you don't know why it happens. And I think it really should say just what happened. And then there was an extensive discussion on the safety path, along with reasons that I felt that should have been put in. And none of that is mentioned, and it really should be mentioned, especially when there's a may vote. You know, if the trustees or the safety path committee is going to be looking at this, they really don't know all the discussion. And I didn't get a consensus that everyone was absolutely 100% for granting the waiver. There's also some ambiguity in this, that it doesn't really say what type of waiver, meaning a waiver of the path but funds in lieu of. But I mean, that was all discussed, and I think it should be made clear in the minutes what they meant by the waiver and what the general objections were. You know, the minutes should reflect the basic content of the meeting, and I think those are all important items.
Well, the waivers mentioned in item four. Correct?
Pardon?
Approval of the waiver, it's right here on item four.
It doesn't really say what the waiver is. Waiver in the past is the...
For the eight foot wide safety foot path?
Yeah, but in the past, the waiver means like funds in lieu of. We discussed it to clarify, it really shouldn't say what it is, that what was decided by the board in general. The waiver is a, you know, no funds in lieu of and no path. I just think it should be clear because there was discussion on that. Because in the past, the waiver generally kind of meant funds in lieu of. Yeah, but I think that that should be discussed, that each option should have been discussed, that we considered those three options. And then the board in general, the vote was to do the waiver of the funds and path.
Mr. Chair?
Anything else? Done. Hasn't our board rules or bylaws indicate that we need a waiver or something filled out relative to the safety path? I thought we put something in somewhere relative to that somewhere.
Well, it's a different type of waiver.
I understand. I'm just wondering what the verbiage of that says. If it's not specific, I would agree with Commissioner Rosner that we would have to have something specific, that we waive both the fee in lieu of and the safety path in general. There's nothing to be done.
Right. Yeah. Anything else?
Just a comment. I wasn't here at the meeting, but my understanding was we don't have the ability to waive a fee.
That's why I think there should just be more about the discussion.
The safety path committee was responsible for that, or the township board. The township board would be the highest responsibility of waiving any fee.
Correct.
We don't have that ability.
No. We gave them a waiver.
Just for the safety path?
For the safety path, yeah.
Without any consideration of the safety path committee? I wasn't at the meeting, I'm just asking a question.
Well, that's why we did discuss it. It was a recommendation.
Because the path went nowhere.
Oh, it went nowhere.
But see, that's the kind of something that's in the minutes.
Okay. I'm just catching up.
Yep.
If we're going to grant that, the foundation should be laid enough that the people coming in and the committee's looking at it and the township board knows what we discussed.
When I made that motion, the motion was the waiver requirement for the eight foot wide safety path along Seymour Lake Road. We added the word requirement, and that's exactly what's in here. So are you saying we needed to expand on the motion to include...
The discussion, I think it's lacking the discussion, what we considered, that we considered the three, so that, like I said, when people come in, they know it's different.
Okay.
That, you know, our typical is to waive the requirement, to put it in and do cash in lieu, and to make sure that people coming in know that that was discussed and for the various reasons of, that the path not going anywhere and those type of things, that this board thought it would be best to waive the requirement and the requirement that the funds be put in lieu of. And just to lay that foundation, so we know in the future why we made that decision and that we did discuss it, it was discussed. I mean, it wouldn't take many sentences to just lay that out so that they knew.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, those in favor approving the minutes?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
The motion passes. All right, let's go to the next item here.
Public comments.
Public comments. Is there anyone out in the public that wishes to comment on an item that's not covered in the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to seven commissioners' comments. Mr. Spiz?
None.
Mr. Rosner?
I really don't see why we don't lay a better foundation. Having minutes that kind of explain what happened only benefits us in the future, so people coming in know why we made those decisions. We took the time to thoroughly discuss it here, and documenting that can only help this board.
Mr. Humwick?
No comment.
Mr. Berger?
I have no comment.
Mr. Noel?
No comment.
Mr. Curtis?
No comments.
Okay, we'll move on to item eight, there are no public hearings. We do not have any unfinished business. We'll move on to item 10, new business pre-application conferences. We'll start with the first one, which is 1190 South Lapeer Road Wetland Grading Parcel P 0435126015. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. If you want to come up to the podium, we're having a pre-application conference. This is a good opportunity for both the township, the planning commission, and you to discuss a few for what you're wanting to accomplish on the parcel. It's an open dialogue, there's nothing binding on your end or on our.
Okay.
It's really a back and forth conversation. Try to, you know, get your goals set up.
All right. Well, thank you and good evening. I'm Joe Say, member of Lucado Investments LLC, the owner of the parcel. I'm just going to try to be brief with a couple of outlines and keep it simple, but also obviously answer any questions any of you may have. So I applied and received, I applied for a wetlands identification study by the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, otherwise known as the MDEQ. And they did their due diligence and they provided, which I believe all of you should have a copy of, a report showing that there's two regulated wetland areas on the property, and there's one non-regulated or unregulated wetland area on the parcel on the northern As far as the MDEQ is concerned, they have no jurisdiction over that, and I can do whatever the township will allow me to do with that. After receiving that, I went to the township and with the help and guidance of Deanna Cushing, I applied for a land improvement permit and a soil erosion exemption. I was uncontacted and had discussion with Steve Wagner of the township's engineering firm. And Steve guided me to first come here and seek approval from the board, the planning commission, to fill in the identified unregulated wetland area. And if approved, then I would provide a grading plan from a qualified engineer. So basically, I'm here this evening seeking approval to fill in that unregulated area in order to pursue development, and noting that we're not seeking approval to fill in the whole area, but just the better portion of it, leaving the western portion intact with the wetlands on the property to the west. And that's all I have. If you need clarification, if you have any questions.
Okay.
What percentage are we talking about already? You maintain, propose to maintain as well of the parcel?
Again, that would be provided with the plan, the grading plan. I'm going to guess, and it's just a guess, you know, because it's all, like I said, it's a smaller percentage, but it still would be adjoined to the wetlands that continue onto the western property, over the western property line.
What's your guess?
Well, my guess is going to be probably, I could maybe, let's put in maybe footage, I mean, I guess approximately 20 feet or so from the west property line headed east.
How many accesses are there that you own to that property?
Well, so to be clear, the reason I'm hesitating is because I also own properties to the north. So I would have whatever would be required, basically.
Right now, you can enter?
Right now, there's, you're entering from the Salvation Army parking lot, because historically it was owned by one party. When they broke it off and split the front from the back, that easement was given. There's also an easement on the south part of the property, and there's one just to the north of the Salvation Army. So there's two now, plus access through the Salvation Army parking lot.
And then you own property in the north part of that as well?
Yes.
What about the west part? Back in Omar, where that subdivision is?
No.
So you would enter the property from Lapeer Road?
You could enter from Lapeer and...
Or the parking lot of the Salvation Army?
Right now, today, because the other easements are not developed yet. They're there, but they're not, you know, they haven't been installed. I know, I'm assuming previous owners are like me, just waiting for, you know, a development to determine, you know, what's going to be necessary and approved by the township. Did that answer your question?
It's just good information.
Yeah. But we also, if needed, would have access from Drainer Road.
Do you have any idea what your developmental plan would be for that property?
Well, there's, I mean, there's a plethora of things we could do. Few things that come to mind are, you know, multifamily apartments, senior living, whatever the case may be. My approach, or I should say our approach, would be to consult with the township to try to see what's not going to benefit us as investors, but benefit the community, which some of you may or may not know, I've been a part of the community for nearly 36 years. I've invested pretty heavily in the community, both residentially and commercially. I've lived here, raised my family here, so, you know, I'm not just coming in trying to, you know...
Anyone else?
A quick question. Can we get clarification on what that's currently zoned? Do you know what it's currently zoned?
Master plan has it as commercial.
That's what I had.
That's what I had. Okay, I just wanted to make...
Master plan, but now it's multifamily.
You spoke of possibly doing residential.
Yeah, because well, on the property right now, it's a four unit building. There's four apartments on the property currently.
Okay.
That's how, when we purchased, they were there.
So they would be considered existing non-conforming? If they're on commercial property and they're residentially used? I mean, is that how this was set up from previous times before us? I mean, this is all before me on the planning commission.
And I'll ask for clarification. My understanding was that it's not commercial, it's only commercial because that's in the master plan, but until someone, you know, develops it as commercial, I think it stays in its current state? Does anyone? Does that sound right?
What the current state is?
That's what I was trying to find out. What is this?
C2.
C2.
C2, it's commercial.
Uh huh.
Okay.
That's still reflected in our current plan, too.
I had two questions. The Salvation Army egress through there, is there any, that always puzzled me, how that you have to drive through the parking lot to get into what's back there. Is there any restrictions on the egress on that?
No. That's, again, that was done probably, well, before my time, maybe even before yours, it's been like that, it's just the way it's always been. Because at one time, it was single owner.
I'm saying there's nothing in the documents restricting.
No. I'm sure that was part of when the previous owner split front from the back, I'm sure that was unnegotiated. That's the way it was when we purchased it.
How much is the width? Well, I should back up. Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Berger?
What is the width of that ingress and egress across that parking lot? Do you know?
I can't answer that, no.
20 feet, 30 feet, 15 feet, 40 feet?
Well, I'm going to guess it's about 40 to 45, only because it's between parking...
So that could be delineated if something was to be developed back there as a main thoroughfare?
If something were...
And it would chop that parking lot in half for the Salvation Army?
It doesn't want to cut it in half, it just makes it a road.
I want to know, well, I want to know if it's in the middle of the parking lot, or if it's on the one furthest north end of it, or how's that work on the parcel that's Salvation Army? It's across their parking lot.
That was all prior to us purchasing the parcel, so I don't know.
Mr. Curtis?
All right, let's go through this. Hi, Mr. Say, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Number one, you purchased the property from Bob Turner's estate. Purchased the property from Bob Turner's estate. Bob Turner put those four apartments in there prior to anything being zoned, so I don't believe there's an easement recorded on that property. How much of that property, of that five acres, goes out to M24? Is it the sliver that's between Pioneer Door and the Salvation Army?
The easement? No, it's just south of the dentist office?
Yeah.
So it's...
Just north of the Salvation Army?
Yes, parking lot.
So that's all, it's north of the park?
That's a 66-foot easement. That's a 66.
The V for the sign is supposed to be? Is that on the easement? There's a structure up there for a sign.
Oh, for a run sign, yeah, yeah, exactly. Yep, yep.
This section here.
Then which house do you own? The second or third one away from your old boomers?
There's three parcels behind that.
Three parcels there. So what I think everybody's trying to ask is, if you fill that, number one, where are you going to have your ingress and egress? Off of Drainer or off of 24 on that piece of property that goes out to 24?
Well, again, that's going to be determined when we get to the part, the phase of a full-blown site plan, and we'll address it, I'm sure, you know, it's going to have to, obviously, we're going to have to conform to what's going to be required. But yeah, whatever's going to be required, we're going to accommodate.
Yeah. Callie, your second question?
Well, yeah, my first would be nice to see then a whole site plan, to know where they are and recorded easements, because it's width to depth and all these kind of things with the creation of lots. Has any land been moved or balanced or grading been done on that property in the last 10 years?
Alls I can say is we've done nothing since I've owned it, which is the last four years.
I've seen it, some movement there, but I mean, so you're saying that you...
I haven't done anything, no.
And you've owned it for how long?
Approximately four years, around four and a half years.
But the area, the areaals would tell us.
I don't want it was dumped, but there is dirt in it.
Yeah, the areaals will tell us that the county would change on that.
So what area gets filled that we're looking at here? I don't really understand that.
Okay, so if you look, I'm going to do my best to look, on the southern part, there's like two ponds on the property.
This one?
Yeah, that one.
And this one?
Yeah, those two, there you go.
Yep.
Those two are regulated by the DEQ. So they can't be touched unless you obtain a permit from the DEQ. The part where it's kind of, I scribbled in, outlined it, that's, yeah, that whole area there, that's the part, 1.2 acres approximately, that is unregulated, and that's what we're seeking to fill.
So that area where it says keep, you're going to fill?
Pardon me?
Doesn't it say keep spelled upside down?
Well, no, when I put, yeah, the part where I put keep was to say, you know, because I don't, you could see where it goes over the property line, the wetlands extends over to the next parcel, yeah, so we're going to keep that portion on our side, you know, just to...
Okay. Oh, that hash line, is it that hash line?
Yeah.
Okay, I see it now.
And that's not, again, that's not exact, this is, like you said, informal, that's the best I could sketch, and you know, and again, just to, yeah, I mean, I didn't, I'm here talking, you know, looking for approval to fill that in. Of course, when we develop, that's a whole different process, you know, this, we don't have a full, you know, plan in place, because this is going to determine what we can or cannot do.
And you've got drainage from the commercial side on the east and also from that neighborhood on the west side?
On the south side, actually.
Funneling surface water into that whole area, correct?
I can't answer that.
Every...
All of that, I know, one of the neighboring properties just did some work and put a four or six inch pipe that's draining my property, which I'm waiting to hear back from the township on, because I don't know who gave them permission to do that, or if they even got permission.
Maybe nobody.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Berger?
This might be, I don't know if I can direct it to Jimmy, man, I have, do you know if there's any positive outlets on that land? Does anybody know?
My analogy is the low point there.
It's all the low point for everything, right? So it all has to collect, so really, it's retention. It's not detention, there's no outlet for it. So it doesn't detain, it retains.
Correct.
So if we were to take 1.2 acres of that property and fill that in, and that stormwater has to go somewhere else, is, I mean, it doesn't have an outlet, so it's going to retain even more at a higher level. I'd be concerned on where...
Well, I think that's part of what Joe's here for. You guys got the memorandum in your package?
Yeah, I read it. I read, I talked to Mr. Wagner today, too, personally.
Basically, the way that the ordinance reads, between zero and two acres, if a wetland is between zero and two acres, it's at the township's discretion as to whether or not they want to allow the applicant to fill it or keep it.
Part of the package.
Between two and five, and that can be done without a permit, between zero and two.
Yeah.
Between two and five, again, we could allow him to, you can allow an applicant to fill wetlands, but the permit is definitely required, and then above five is when the DEQ gets involved. Okay? You know, for this to say whether or not he could fill it, or there was no grading plan attached to it, I mean, really, we didn't have anything to go off of, and so that's the, you know, the way that our memo reads, essentially, that we would at least need, before we would recommend filling the wetland, we would need to see some sort of a grading plan. And I think what Mr. Say is here tonight is to say, well, if I do my development, are you going to allow me to? So I don't know, you know, it's kind of like a cart, chicken and the egg thing, you know, who will go, do we tell him to fill it first so he can design it, or does he design around it and then come back to us? I think that because it's not a part of the, because it's at the discretion of the township, I don't know if anybody walked the property or not, he could put a development plan together, and that's kind of what I'm hearing everybody wants to see, like, why do we need it to allow him to fill those 1.2 acres? Or a portion thereof, it may not be the full 1.2 acres.
So again, and it made sense to me when I spoke with Steve, he said, well, there's no sense in going, I mean, just being flat honest, going to an expense of putting a development plan when we don't even know if we're using it. So it seems like, and I'm not trying to offend anyone, but common sense to me is, okay, can we fill this? Yes. Now we go, okay, now here's the grading plan set for your approval, step two, okay? We provide that. Once the grading plan's done, then we move on to whenever that's going to happen as a development phase. Then, of course, we come back again with full-blown plans. But again, from my viewpoint, it doesn't make sense to spend thousands of dollars on all this just to see if we could fill in the wetlands. It seems like it's definitely putting the cart before the horse in that direction. So what we're here for, again, I just did, you know, just to show, those are kind of three buildings that we would put, and you can't really do anything there with that, it's kind of just in a wrong spot. The other thing is, when the DEQ representative was out there, he walked in there and flagged everything, it's not wet. It's not wet. They call it wetlands because of the growth, but it's not wet, it doesn't retain.
So wetlands activity area.
Yeah, maybe, I may go into it, but there are the two ponds there. So I'm pretty sure if need be, if there had to be something implemented for drainage, I've got two nice big ponds that would, are more than sufficient to accommodate, I'm going to be kind of, other people's drainage. I'm just saying, I mean, and again, I can't wrap my head around a property owner having to accommodate other people's drainage from off-site. I just, I can't wrap my head around that, still. I mean, I'm looking, when they developed that on Omar, I don't, again, I wasn't part of that, but years ago, I remember when they developed that, didn't they, did they have some kind of a plan in place for the drainage for the subdivision? I can't imagine it was just let it dump on the neighboring property. I didn't own it back then, but if, I mean, I can't imagine that was the plan, just to let all the water go onto neighboring property. I thought, you know, I would think they would add to put the proper storm sewer system in to accommodate the development, so.
Callie, you have another?
Yeah, I know there's mention of a DEQ letter. Did that get given to the township?
Absolutely.
Is there a reason we didn't get it? I didn't see it in my pack.
Not in the pack.
It looks like...
I have one, if you want to take a look at it.
Engineering guide.
Deanna said she was going to distribute them, so I thought she said she was going to.
Didn't see it. I would have assumed you would have given it. I got the memorandum, but not the DEQ report.
No, not the DEQ.
No, I'm asking for the MDEQ report.
The DEQ report.
It's not that big, does anyone see it? If you want it, I got it.
No, I believe what they said, right, the integrity of that letter is correct.
Future to turn in, but, so that was addressing the regulated wetlands, the ones that are over the minimum size. Did they make any mention of the other one, other than the size didn't require regulation?
Yeah, I'll give it to you real quick, if you want.
So they didn't tie them together, in other words?
Well, it's, I think it's on there, but let me show you. You get the letter, and then it shows these two are regulated, and this one's unregulated.
These, okay, these are smaller but regulated because of the location?
Because of locations. And the reason they're regulated is because of the location to the small, large pond or small lake to the south.
Okay, because I know Red Barn, there's, yeah, and that's why I didn't know...
The one just north of the Oxford Mill Shopping Center, they're back there, so that's the only reason they're regulated, because of the proximity of these to that.
Yeah, I just didn't know if they had factored in Red Barn and what was there, and if those wetlands were doing any kind of infiltration and filtration, you know, for some of the previous issues there. So that's why I just wanted to kind of say.
I don't know of any, other than, like I say, the one party who actually extended a drain pipe under the property, I don't know, in the time that I've been there, of any just runoff going there. I think, you know, with the grade of the neighboring properties, I think it's kind of all sinks down in the soil, which, you know, we're fortunate in Oxford that we have a lot of gravel, so I think a lot of it kind of just goes in before it even hits the property line.
Jack, still going?
I don't know, Jack, did you have?
Jack is still going.
No. I just wanted to, we talked about this in a planning commission many years ago, when Bob Turner came and wanted to build all around that, and a question of soil boring came up because lifting this elevation of that property up, it's a natural flow from that subdivision to the west into those two regulated wetlands. And at the time, they had to do soil borings to find out what was beneath there before you filled it, because it being a wetland for hundreds of years could be filled with because it being a wetland for hundreds of years could be filled with muck, peat, and built up. You lift it in lifts, and you won't get compaction, in a few years, you'll have sinkholes, and that was a big concern. I don't know as if the soil borings were ever done to determine, you just can't go in and fill on top of black dirt or a swamp, it'll just keep sinking down.
Well, my understanding is that's what the grading plan is, that's what they do. They come out and see what's there, and then they come up with a grading plan, and maybe, Jim, maybe you know about it, that's what my assumption was. If I hire an engineer to come out and say, okay, we need a grading plan, they're gonna come out and they're gonna see what it is, and then they're gonna provide a plan that's sufficient.
Right, and that's where this planning commission could make the determination, that your engineer clearly states, the fractile soils can be evacuated, and you can lift and compact and raise that up. The addressing of the drainage, the natural drainage from the subdivision would then go to the regulated, uh, wetlands, the two that are on the map right now.
Right.
But cart, horse, you know, we don't know if it's, you don't know if this stuff's 100 feet deep, and you have to get it all out of there to fill it with compactable fill, the what percent, 98?
Probably if he's putting a building on it.
Yeah, 98%. So cart, horse, cart, horse, can you fill if you have to remove 100 feet of peat? We don't know that. Will we allow you to it? We don't know. Your grading plan is needed to say, yes, it can be done, it can be, and for your own good, it can be done.
No, no, I understand that, so I guess, and I think, unless I misunderstood, so tonight was supposed to be, well, yes, provided you, you supply a grading plan that's sufficient, the township or the planning commission, you know what I'm saying? We, yeah, will approve you to fill that, provided you have, you know, you know what I'm saying? That's what I thought tonight was for, to see if, you know, because of when I read, um, real quick, I just, this is what stood out to me in the, um, the memorandum from Jim's office that Steve wrote, I don't know if you guys got that?
Yep, we've got it.
So I think what Steve pointed out, the reason he couldn't, he suggested coming here, and as I think is on the last page, where it talks about section 22 dash 162, uh, where it says, "All the Oxford Township Code Ordinance gives a township the authority to determine whether such wetland areas are essential to the preservation of the natural resources of the township." So I think that's in a nutshell, whether I read it, and maybe Jim can clarify that, I think that's pretty much what the criteria was, I thought, is to determine that.
Further down in Steve's letter, it says, "A proposed grading drainage plan has not been included with the submittal, so a review cannot be performed. Now we need the horse in front of the cart, because we need to know if this grading can be done in order to tell you, yes."
But my, my question is, see, I don't wanna, I, I don't think I misunderstood, because Steve was very helpful, and he said, rather than you go, and as a matter of fact, I had my engineer call him, and they had discussion. My engineer said, no, Steve, go here, and if the to, if the township says, yes, you can fill it, subject to, you know, then, then you get the grading plan. Is that, what you understood, Jim?
Well, it's a pre-app, so I don't know that the, that the PC here tonight is gonna make a determination on that, but I think that what you're looking for is a good flavor, maybe from the PC, that if he were to spend a little bit more effort on putting a development plan together, that this PC would consider, you know, filling that wetland.
What, are we talking a development plan or a grading plan? I think, I think they're two different things.
You're here to find out how we feel about it, and so that, that's why you're here, really.
The ordinance requires a grading plan.
Okay.
But I'm sensing from this commission that a rudimentary development plan, just showing that maybe the building layout or a road or something, maybe what they are, um, what they're in need of before they feel they can act properly on this.
Can I get clarification? Can we ask?
But that's just me speaking, I don't wanna speak for them.
What their thoughts are, or?
But that's kind of what I'm, I'm getting the sense.
Okay, this, yeah, he, he kind of like, he's definitely thinking, you wanna hear how we feel. I think in the overall picture, first is just, how do you feel about filling in the wetland? And then the rest comes, comes secondary. To me, filling in the wetland, what you're gonna do with it is irregardless, let's just talk about the wetland. Then we go to the next step, and the next step, and the next step.
Right, right.
Okay, so that's why I'm just focused on the wetland.
Right.
I personally, you know, in the same thing, that wetlands are really important, we need them, we have, you know, contamination in the area and stuff, and wetlands filter. However, we have two other, um, areas there. So for me, a study that shows the significance or insignificance of that in relation to the other bodies of water that you have on there, and, you know, what filtration rate and all that kind of stuff, if you can demonstrate to me that that, you know, the preservation of that one isn't really necessary in regards to the need that you're preserving the others, and you're doing that, then, you know, I would, that would be something I would consider. So for me, it's the balance of, you know, is losing that really going to be detrimental in the whole picture? If you can demonstrate it's not, for me, and then you'd have to demonstrate that you can fill it, and you can do all those other things. For me, it's just a matter of getting that environmental study in there to say what significance that has in the overall picture.
So again, my understanding is, that's all part of the DEQ when they come out and do their study, and if it was necessary, is my understanding, maybe any, is they would not, it, they would have been considered regulated.
No, the DEQ just does, just is very...
Rudimentary.
Ballpark, this is, this is, you know, specific to this one, to this one, they're not looking at the overall picture, they're not looking at all that. That's where your own environmental person generally comes in, and, you know, somebody that's certified to do that, and they can give that whole picture of the filtration rates and all that kind of stuff, and the significance of that wetland.
So in Steve's letter, he had a recommendation, I think to that point.
Yeah.
That the township may wish to, uh, employ the services of a qualified wetland consultant.
Yeah, see, to me, that's where if you, if you as the, the property owner, you know, can demonstrate to us that this community will not be negatively impacted by the loss of that wetland, and that you possibly might even be making, uh, more preservation efforts and stuff to the other ones, then, then in the end, we're all ahead. You know, in the end, we all wanna be ahead, we don't wanna be behind. So that's really, if you can demonstrate that, for me personally, I, I would move forward into the next phases. It wouldn't be an absolute stopper for me.
Mr. Holwick? Yeah, I completely concur with Kelly. I think we need to know what ramifications will occur if he fills it in. You know, what, if there are any ramifications, if there's no disruption to the area, like she said, then we can move on to, to the next phase. But I, I wouldn't feel comfortable, um, allowing him to fill it in.
So...
If I didn't know what the, how the effect is gonna be in the area.
So I have a hypothetical, just again, so I have clarification. Hypothetical, you say, fill it, I fill it, and I don't do anything for 20 years, and water's coming on, the water is, you know, we're discharging it, so what, what's gonna happen? I mean, it's still gonna discharge on my property. The, the fact that it's, you know what I'm saying, the fact that it's a wetland with things growing up out of it that, you know, I think is irrelevant, because even if I just, you know, fill it with anything and didn't do anything to it, it's still, it's not gonna affect, this won't be detrimental to anyone, and it won't even be any more detrimental to me, if, you know what I'm saying? The only reason I wanna be able to fill it, so then we could say, okay, then now that I know we can use it, possibly use it, as long as we have the proper grading plan, we have the proper soil borings to show, you know, if we wanna develop. But I, I, again, in my mind, I don't know, again, if we filled it and did nothing else, there would be no detriment to anyone. The water would still be draining the same, I'm not touching any other thing other than that wetland, the water would still drain on my property.
Mr. Curtis?
It's, it's one acre of lowland. There are 2.4 acres of regulated wetland.
Right.
The water flows to the lowest part. If we're keeping 2.4 acres of retaineded water and filling in one acre of lowland, it, it doesn't hold water unless it rains hard, and then it goes away.
Right, it doesn't hold, it doesn't retain, right.
The only reason, it's not regulated wetland, people call it a wetland because there's marshy stuff growing.
Exactly.
But the water clearly demon, clearly goes to the lowest point, which is the two that hold water. You're looking at an acre of land that's low, they wanna fill it. The problem everybody here has, Joe, if I may, is you put a parking lot on it, now that's all gonna, it's all gonna go to your property anyway. The property's in the west, it all goes there naturally. If you're not blocking that, you're not causing detriment to your west. I don't know why we couldn't fill it, but I think everybody's looking into the future, saying, you're ingress and egress off a 24-inch drainer, you know the corner's bad, but it's a one acre of land. Why not? That's what I'm asking myself now, after listening, is why not? We still have 2.4 of wetland that is regulated that can't be filled.
And the whole parcel's nearly 11 acres, I think it's 10.8, so it's 1.2 out of 10.8.
The plan we had a long time ago was filling all of it.
Right.
Yes, Mr. Berger?
Well, Jack kind of stepped in where I would have made comments, uh, in regards to what, I'm not opposed to filling in the property as long as it's done in accordance with the regulations, um, that take place to maintain what's supposed to happen to that property. I mean, if it, if it's filled with the proper materials, and what I don't know what's in there right now, and it percolates in the same format of when we get a natural rainfall, like you said, if he filled it, and it was filled with the right materials, it would percolate itself out anyway, and water's gonna go to the lowest point. The only thing we would have to do then, if a plan was brought in, and I wanna be upfront, I'm not real keen on creating a lot more multiple residential, but that's my own opinion here on this part of it. Um, I'd like to see it maybe used for something a little different. We got apartments and complexes and stuff right now that haven't even been filled, and we haven't even developed them all. We still have five more buildings up at Abbey Ridge to build, but just not go there yet. So I'm not opposed to filling in the property as long as everything can be complied with under the guidelines that are in place, even through the state of Michigan. So if the right materials are put in there, it's gonna percolate, and even if it's not developed, like he said, until he brings a plan in, I wouldn't be opposed to it if the proper fill was brought in, and it was percolated just down through the ground like naturally would happen anyway, and cleanses, cleanses the water.
So just to address a couple of your comments, I would never go on record as saying, the day comes to develop, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get with the township, and I wanna see what's beneficial. I mean, 'cause, and you know what, hey, if, we have apartment complexes that aren't moving, why would I wanna build apartments? I mean, I, I'm just saying, just to address that.
Your first comment was multiple residential in the beginning.
It was an option. I mean, I, there's, there's, there's a lot of options.
That was only an opinion of mine that I was giving, I'm not really ready for that.
I've come up with probably every option in the book, I just say, but, um, I'm open, I mean, I'm open to that. I'm all open to that, uh, to what will be done there.
Mr. Curtis?
If this commission recommends the approval to fill that one, that one section of piece of property, it would have to do, be done in accordance to the engineer's ordinance adherence to soil borings to determine if stuff has to be removed, and then approved soils be brought in in lifts and compacted, that's all yours. But before the grading plan is approved, that'll all have to be done.
I get that.
You're just looking for approval, a recommendation that we would say, it's okay to fill one acre.
Exactly, with the proper grading plan, that's all I'm looking for.
Allowing 2.4 acres to receive the water, filling one acre, to me, makes sense.
So the bad news was, I called my architect, get a recommendation for a good engineer, and he recommended Jim's firm, which obviously he can't do because of the conflict.
I'll be reviewing it.
A little bit of a conflict, so I couldn't use Jim's firm.
Mr. Knoll, you walked the property along as I did too, you, what's your, what's your reading?
I have a lot of the same feelings. I'm concerned about what happens tomorrow, what happens after the, you get your approval. I'd like to see the grading plan, there's no developmental plan for what's gonna go in there, how the traffic flow's gonna be, what's gonna happen down the road, that's where I'm concerned.
So to address your concern, when that happens, we will deal with that when we get there, because it will have to work for both the township and for me as an investor, you know what I'm saying? It's gonna have to work. And at that point, uh, if, you know, if the rest of the property, we do soil borings, and it's not gonna, you know, it's gonna be, uh, too expensive and not cost effective, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try and build something that's, you know what I'm saying? That, either it's gonna work or it's not, but, but step one, maybe step one is to know that I'm gonna be able to use that, provided it's gonna support development. If it doesn't support the development, then it just won't support it, then we just still have land with water going on it. So that's my, you know, my opinion.
Mr. Holwick? Well, I guess I wanted, Jim, is it possible to make determination if he is allowed to fill it, what we're, what the implications would be for the area?
That's what the grading plan would provide, that's what the ordinance requires in order for the filling of the wetland, is that he provide a grading plan. He doesn't have to show a development plan, which I know everybody wants to see, what he might be doing in the future, but at this time, he would submit a grading plan, which we would look at and make sure that it's not causing any detriment to any of the other surrounding properties.
Who designated it wetlands?
Somebody called it wet, the DEQ did.
Oh, I mean, it's, it's, the township hasn't officially declared it a, the acre.
Unregulated.
It's a parcel, it's unregulated. I mean, I hate to deprive a guy to use his property in the way he sees fit for the, you know, in accordance with a word.
In fact, he has the same restrictions.
Well, the contours of the land, the way that it is, like Mr. Curtis was saying, the two ponds are the low points, there's no way that they couldn't get a grading plan to work. They're not gonna be impacting, um, you know, the, the people adjacent to the west would be the biggest concern there, because some of their drainage, and looks like it comes down into that wetland. But I'm confident that, um, the engineer that they choose to do that would be able to develop a proper grading plan for that. By the way, I like your architect if he recommended it, so thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think what we're trying to determine for Joe is, I'm not opposed to filling it in as long as the rules are followed accordingly through the different departments that need to be, um, recognized. So it's from the size of the property and what's there, if he has to create larger retention areas for development or anything in the future, it all comes to us again, and, uh, for what it is, it's a depression, it's a depression in the land, that's what it is.
It's crater.
It's not hold, yeah, it's not holding anything. Uh, it could maybe, uh, uh, downpour some temporarily before it percolates itself away. So my sentiments are, uh, not knowing exactly what he's gonna put there, but like you said, even if it was left for 20 years, I'm not opposed, as long as it's not gonna be detrimental to any adjacent property owners.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Say you get your approval and you start grading, and you bring it in material, is it gonna go through the, how are you gonna access the property?
The easiest way I can, without obstructing anybody else's property, I mean, it would, it'll be...
You've got a parking lot there that's adjacent, you said that was part of the usage, so you've got...
I won't be going through the parking lot, the association, no, will not be going through there, because we get, you know, we get, more than likely, it's gonna just come from drainage road. Yeah, which, I have other entities that own that, so I, I control the, I control that.
All right, so this non-binding conversation between, between everybody.
It's non-binding.
Well, he wants, he wants your opinion.
That's what I'm, I wanna get him a straw poll from this commission as to whether he should, you know, go ahead and move forward in accordance with the regulations set out by the township, should we let him fill it? Straw poll?
If he, if he can submit to me documentation that's sufficient to establish that no negative impact will result.
Mr. Spitz?
I'm okay.
For Holwick?
Yeah, I'm okay with him filling.
Mr. Berger?
Yeah, I am, I already admitted.
Mr. Knoll?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis? Okay then.
Thank you very much.
Our straw poll is, yeah.
I will move forward with the, through the proper stages to get a grading plan together.
Yes.
Right? Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the, uh, the next one. We have another, uh, pre-application conference with the Village Center, is the applicants here. Same rules apply, it's non-binding, we're just gonna have open conversation. I'll try to twist my head around for my commission as quick as possible.
Okay, I'm gonna try to plug in, and take the, take the screen, if that's possible.
Have to state your name and what your project is entailing.
My name is Peter Stuhleire, I'm with Design House Architecture, representing Contour of Bloomfield Hills, project in Waterstone, and I'm trying to get some... Maybe I have to disconnect.
Is that connected from the, like, input switches or something like that?
You should have a switch somewhere.
I'm plugged in now.
Pat, you know how these flip back, you know?
Your remote? Well, these are, right, no, there should be a switch from location to application.
Is it over there?
Down there? Down there?
It's down there, I think, on the end.
Nope, there, something happened.
There you go.
Fantastic. Okay, so I was hired by Contour, I'm their primary architect in Ohio, Georgia, Michigan, and several months ago, maybe it was six months, maybe more, they brought me on board to look at the commercial zone property inside of Waterstone. And I came in, they said, you know, multifamily makes sense to us, and I said, okay, I'll take in multifamily and do some conditional rezoning or something like that. Everybody here was on the board, I think, and remembers how that went with the, with the community, and, you know, maybe it wasn't the right thing, it was certainly not inspired. Commissioner Resner made a point, and when I went back to the office that week, or that, you know, the next day even, it really resonated with me, resonated with me, and it was, why can't we do, why can't somebody just propose what was intended when, when these things were brought before the city, the township originally? And I said, that's a great idea. First thing I had to do was approach the developer and say, look, this isn't a duplex site, this isn't a, this isn't a single-family site, this is a site that had an intent in the late 90s. I'm new to the village, or I'm new to the, I'm new to the township. As you know, I own the Goddard School, just kind of inside the, inside of Waterstone, or tucked in the corner of Waterstone. So I understand the community, the people, the families, and I also understand that property. The reason I understand that property is because I, I look back into the master deed, I look back into the, I look back into the time that it was planned, and many of you probably remember it better than me, I wasn't here. But this is the property. As you can see, it's basically in the center of Waterstone, surrounded by ponds, golf course, senior housing, different density of living, such as duplexes and single-family, small lot, large lot, but this is the center of, of the town along Market Street. You all know that it's got parallel parking already built into the curbs, it was part of the, it was part of the master plan community for that stretch. It's very interesting to me, so I look back into the deed. I don't know who Landarc is, I don't know who they were, I don't know what they thought, I didn't, I didn't see their presentations, I don't know if they had one. Jack's laughing at me because he remembers. But I do know this, it was inspired by something that was happening at the time. In 1996, there was a movement in master plan communities, and the pinnacle, the greatest part of that movement was demonstrated by, by a community called Celebration in Orlando, and I don't know if anybody has visited this community. This, this was 1996, Waterstone was conceived, by what I can tell, in 1998, and in a very, very similar way. So I went back to the master deed, I wanted to look at what was drawn in the 1999 recorded master deed, and this is it. The black marks in that little box are what were drawn on the master deed in the commercial district. Those are actually, I just filled them in with a, with a black pen. Anything that wasn't single-family in the community was drawn, including the duplexes as far as what it would be when it was built. So I just wanted to see what they anticipated when they, when they were conceptualizing the development. It was zoned C1 at the time. C1 isn't exactly what I think the, the thought was for that, for that little center of town, that little center of the master plan development. C1 is more of what you see here. It's one and two-story, retail and office, low-intensity commercial, and so that's kind of what you would see, and I don't think that anybody anticipated drawing in a great deal of outside traffic into the middle of Waterstone for, for business ventures, although when you look at the master deed, you get the impression that that very well could be that. It also could be that. For the C1 zoning, that very much so, what's drawn, it's, it's an office building, professional office, so I really don't think that's what was imagined. I don't know that C1 was exactly aligned with what this master plan community had in mind. What did they have in mind is the question, and should we adhere to what they had in mind? How do we find out what they had in mind? That's why I'm here. I want feedback from people that were there when they saw this presentation, when they, when they heard about it, you know, if, if there's records of it, if there's drawings of it, I'd love to see them. So the questions are, does C1 zoning, as written, promote the original vision? I don't think so. What was the vision? That's what I'm going to explore with you tonight. And will the community welcome the original thought of what the center of Waterstone was supposed to be? So I looked at it, and I, and I used the Celebration precedent as, as what I think it was really meant to be, and there are a few reasons why I do that, and I'll get to those in the next slide, but those are the two, that's Celebration on the left and Waterstone on the right. They're generally the same size. What they do have is a spectrum of demographics, they've got senior living, they've got condominium living, they've got duplexes, single-family of all sizes, and they've got recreation, lakes, ponds, beaches, parks, and golf courses, both. So why do I think, why do I think that they used it as a, as a design inspiration in the, in the late 90s? One is the design is obviously very similar, the amenities are almost identical, the demographic spectrum, like I mentioned, the development date is a big part of it, being that you could have walked into Celebration and seen it, and by the way, that's the Truman Show, if you've ever seen the movie The Truman Show, that was filmed in Celebration. Slightly larger scale to, to Waterstone, but that, that kind of closed community, master plan with, with all the amenities. The bigger deal that I mentioned, or that I, that I thought was the, was the clue to the inspiration, was the name of the street. The main street that drove through the commercial district is Market Street, it's Market Street in both places. So that's what gave me the, you know, the forensic evidence that I needed to say. And, and when you were in the center of town, what did you see? In both, you saw the town center, you saw the lake, you saw the golf course, and you were on Market Street, so that's very similar. What is Celebration physically? What does it feel like? What does it look like on that, in that kind of core of town? These are pictures of it. It's two and a half story buildings, it's very similar to the Boulder Point Building and to the, and to the entry iconic pieces, shingle-style, resort-style architecture, the two are very similar. So this is what you would see if you were in Orlando on Market Street in Celebration. So what, what, what Contour enthusiastically embraced, when I explain this to them, instead of them building more of what they do, which is thousands and thousands of condominiums and apartments across the United States, is, is more of this type of, type of development. The major conflict between creating a town center the way that was envisioned and getting community support is traffic. So our vision is to give the appeal of a town center without, without creating the commercial C1 district traffic that it's zoned for today. So if I were to go back, well, I think there's a slide forward, the amount of commercial property that's there could, could really drive traffic through the roof. If, if all of a sudden all the properties along M24 and in other places that we have as commercial property were filled, and this was available, you would have a lot of outsiders driving to these establishments in the middle of Waterstone, which doesn't make any sense at all to me. That doesn't mean that the physical nature of this little core of town can't have the same emotional feeling as a, as a little town center without any of the traffic. So what you're seeing here is the approach from the east, the park would be on the left, the, the existing park would be on the left, I think the golf course actually creeps up on the right side, and then you would, you would enter the center of town where the road is already built with parallel parking on both sides, very wide road, I don't know if it's 70 feet wide or something like that when you get in there, but of course, we would, we would slow traffic with a, with an intersection, a stop sign, crosswalks, maybe even a, a center boulevard. So this is a comparison between what I think is right, and what I think will gain community support on the right, and what was drawn in the master deed on the left. I embellished the left with the parking spaces that would be required for the businesses that would come with C1, but that is simply an enlargement of what was physically drawn in 1999 in the recorded master deed. On the right is what you just saw an image of right there. So I'll get into a little bit more detail as we, as we move forward. But the, there's a chart in there that talks about how would we achieve this, it's not really going to be C1, it's not going to, it doesn't, there's no, there's no provision in C1 for a residential component, even if it was a mixed-use building, it would, it would by, by any means always have to be a PUD. Would it qualify? I don't know, in terms of the size of acreage, and I don't know if the, if Carlisle Wartman could, could give us some enlightenment on that. I think it does. Certainly it would qualify, in my opinion, on the public benefit side with the, with the different public features, including a community pool and, and some other vest pocket parks and, and other, other components that we'll delve into. The coverage in terms of how much is paved and/or buildings, based on what was conceived in 1999 and what we're providing, is essentially the same. I think we're, my design probably has three or four or five percent more coverage, even though the buildings are broken up much better in scale than the master, master deeds drawings. So the one way we can make this thing appeal as a town, as a, as a center of town, is a component like a very, very small general store. I know that Ms. Rosner, we talked about, you know, is it ice cream, is it, is it a, is it a barber shop, or is it a dry cleaner? You know, something could be there that could support the community, and it could be, and, and I think that a 1,500 square foot general store is, is the perfect thing, and I'm talking, you know, it's a long process, but eggs and milk and bubble gum and, you know, bottled water when you're jogging or something like that, it's not, it's nothing that would attract somebody to come off of M24. Although it might, because it's, it's a, it's a beautiful little town square, but still, it's not meant for that. It's very small, but it does give the appeal, if it's right in the middle of town, you've got, you've got a little gathering spot, a little bit of, a little bit of gravity that, that moves you towards this area. And we look at it from the standpoint of a pool. The pool could be standalone just for the, the new residents, that this, that this piece of the development could serve, or it could be open to the, to the Waterstone in general. I analyzed pool sizes, pool deck sizes around Oakland County. We're showing something that's about 75% as big as a normal subdivision pool amenity. I know that Christian is imagining pools and there's, you know, swim schools and other recreation and lakes and things like that, so we're not trying to create a giant obtrusive behemoth of a, of a swim club, just something that's, that's there and available for people to, to enjoy. I think it was part of, part of what a lot of people thought maybe might happen in Waterstone. But either way, I think that the pool in my, in my imagination would be, would be included for just even the residents of the new units. We also talk about a few strategically placed live-work places. Live-work being you have a condominium and 300 square feet of the condominium is on the road, which is for consulting. You might have a little sign above it, but it's very small, a very small business run out of your home, and that could be governed by the PUD in terms of what those types of uses would be. But if they're strategically located along this main area, you could give the appeal that this was an active center, an activated street, without bringing additional traffic or any significant additional traffic. There was some, there was some discussion about how we, how the, the previous, the previous design addressed the edges of these parcels and how, how it might be obtrusive to the different adjacencies. This is the, the hottest adjacency, which is the, the single-family pocket that looks across the pond at the, at the property, which we would put our least intense use, which would be condominiums. These are duplex condominiums built to look like single-family homes, simply sitting where single-family homes would, would naturally sit and have the same kind of rhythm or scale as all of Waterstone. There's another view of, of some of the amenity, or not amenity, but types of, of living, which everything here is proposed to be owned condominium, two cars, inside garage parked, nothing is rental, nothing is, nothing is parked in carports or, or parked in parking lots, it's all homes. In my experience locally, these types of units are selling in the, in the $300 a square foot range, maybe more. You know, property, we all know properties in Birmingham, they're selling for a thousand a square foot. Rochester, we're getting 400 a square foot. There was, there was discussion of, of depleting property values on the per-square-foot basis when you, when you bring product like this on the market. I don't think so. But the demographic supports this, whether it's first-time homebuyers or dual, dual-location families, or baby boomers, empty nesters and so forth, it supports this type of thing. My parents live in this, this type of product, and these are, these were single-family people for generations. Here's a, a site plan diagram showing the, the basic layout. The pool, you can see kind of in the middle, the general store is the dead center, so all the intensity focuses into the center and it disperses as it goes towards the edges. This would be an image of what you might see from a hot air balloon, but that's, I don't, I don't find that unappealing, I don't find that like shockingly dense, I see it as kind of fitting into the, fitting into the, the current massing that's there, and this is kind of a, you know, this, this would be sort of a, a weather chart or a cloud chart, or the, the redder it is, the more intense. I don't, I don't find any of it that intense, but I think that if you were to look at this from an intensity level, it graduates outwards and, and reduces in intensity towards the edges. The yellow, the, the yellowest being single-family, the orange being, being multifamily, and when I say multifamily, I'm still talking about condominiums and senior living, and the kind of, the between orange and yellow being duplex condominium living. So we think that pays regard to the edges. I, I, we really don't have a, I have a, a passion for this because I'm, I'm a business owner here, I'm an architect, I'm a huge student of the original designer of Celebration. I've studied it, I've been there, I understand the, I understand the meaning of it, I understand this is a much smaller scale, but it still, I believe, was the, was the origination of the thought of Waterstone, and I think that's clear in the master deed here, and, and I think it's a huge win-win. I don't know how much resistance the community is interested in, I think that the single-family idea of running single-family on this, on these properties is a mistake. I think that an amenity like this brings the community together, doesn't tear it apart, and so on and so forth. But the developer is backing this, interested in it, enthusiastic about it, and, and so am I. And I just wanted to show the commissioners what my thoughts were, you know, to see if there was any feedback or, you know, questions and, and, you know, direction. Should I even bother? I don't, you know, there's plenty of, plenty of work. But this is a great opportunity for the township. That's all I can say.
Okay, Mr. Berger.
Okay. When I looked at the plan, the, the duplex units that you have on the southern portion of property, which are, I guess, on the south side of Market Street and such, they, they look good from that standpoint, where you direct that flow from the, across the lake view and stuff like that. I thought that looked pretty good. Buildings, buildings nine and 10, I mean, they're a little intense for me. I would have rather seen, if you're going to try to use some multiple residential in there, like you have quite a bit of it right now, which is a little bit too much for me. I would have rather seen something a little more creative to, people love to exercise today, and they like a little more, they like an ability to walk to a place where they can do that if, if need be. So even things that are crazy as racquetball-type things and exercise-type facilities and stuff, I think you still have some ways to put some commercial activity in there, a little more, I want to try and say it, with a little more square footage of commercial activity and not quite as much residential, the way you've done it. For me, I mean, trends are changing in how people live today. I understand all that. I'm kind of familiar with those village atmosphere things. I owned a place in Florida for 12 years. But so it, it's still a little too dense for me on the residential part. And it's, and more on the northern side. And I don't, I don't know, and I don't know if this was just a thought process. I don't know why you put the pool like on the street side, why you wouldn't have the pool like on the other side where it would be a little less intrusive to even a neighbor, kind of in the residential portion of what's already existing. So maybe part of it's backwards, in my opinion. That's all, on how you laid it out.
Yeah, maybe you're right. I was just, I, I was.
But there's, I think there's some ways that you could blend more commercial into it because it is commercial zoning.
Yeah.
With some residential, but not as intense as what you have it. The density is a little bit too much for me.
I, I, I don't have a problem with, with additional commercial. I mean, I have a problem with the left slide being all commercial. I think that's a, that's a loser. But.
I'm not asking for all.
No, but I, but I don't, I don't have a problem with more. I, I was trying to, I'm trying to thread that needle.
I want things that people can walk to. There's, that's a big, that's a big group out there. When you look at, I drive through that subdivision all the time. And there's a lot of people that walk on all those pathways. I think it's great. I pointed it out to my wife the other night when we passed through there. Well, it was last night, actually. And how many people actually use all those pathways to get to and from? And if they had some more commercial activity to get to and even be able to communicate socially there, I think those would be good ways to take some of that property and get a little more commercial use out of it and less residential. That's me. And I'm not trying to say pull people off M24 like you admitted earlier.
Yeah, I don't want to do that.
I'm trying to say pull people from within Waterstone to utilize some of those commercial activities. So.
I agree with you.
I think if the right activities were involved with it, they could benefit people that are already existing there and plus maybe a few more new. And I'm not saying open the pool up for other people throughout whole, the whole Waterstone thing. Even the golf course people came to us one time, wanted to put a swimming pool in on a portion of land that they have next to their parking lot. But with, I didn't think that was the greatest activity up there either. But I think pools work for certain people to have therapy in today. Certain people, certain things, what they use pools for and how they utilize them. I see it in Florida more actively with people that do exercising pools and such. So there's ways that that whole thing can work as an amenity. But you're too great on your density with residential to me. That's just me as one commissioner.
I appreciate that comment. I didn't look at this as a number that I was trying to back into. I, I drew, I adhered to a, to a common setback. I adhered to a distance between buildings, a height, you know, roadway, parking spaces, garages. And it just, it is what, it, it came out to what it was. So it wasn't a, I wasn't trying to formulate a number.
Okay.
And, and I don't know that there is a, there is an exact number. I think the number is, the number has to be enough to, to do the project, you know? If we're talking twenty units, nobody's doing the project and nobody, you know, nobody cares. But if we're talking, you know, if we're talking a few less or a few more, that, I'm sure, I'm sure it works. Or if they're bigger, you know, I could have some units here that I think they're a thousand to thirty-two hundred square foot condominiums. I mean, that could be, that could be a hundred units, that could be fifty units, you know, depending on what the, what the market analysis says at the time that we really kick off into, you know, final planning. So, and, and, but I appreciate the comment. And I do agree. I mean, if you could service, if there were things for the people, other than a childcare center, we'll put it right there.
We'll call it Goddard.
Yeah, we're just gonna, we're eliminating that. We're writing that out of the PUD.
Ms. Rosner, you had something?
The concept plans you have on there, like the one you marked up for the commercial?
Yes.
Are you saying that meets all of our current zones with the current zoning requirements with setback and open space and density?
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying that's what, I traced the master deed. And then I added up the square footage as if it were one-story buildings and parked it based on your zoning code.
Because I don't see anything that dense in any of the commercial stuff we have. You talked about doing forensic stuff. I was actually on this body when you approved it.
That's why I'm here.
So we don't need to dig it up. We actually have people that were here. So let me tell you, I even refreshed my memory by going back and going through the minute books again and reading them because we all can do that and we all should, look at the minutes from when this was all done. And there was a lot of negotiations being done at the time when Waterstone came in. And it changed substantially from, you know, starting as a horse stable and this and this to, to what it is now. And it's, it's been a long progress and process. So we got the golf courses part of the open space, but there was negotiations done on that commercial. And that's something that developer wanted, that developer pushed for that commercial in there. And that was a concession that we made with other things. And so now that it's a four-acre and a two-acre piece, that is a, it's a quarter. When you look from 24, you look down, that is what you're going to see. Right now, you don't see it because it's land. But when you put something there that's going to change the flavor and look, when you look down Market Street, where before Market Street was Market Street, the commercial street. We had talked about it. The discussion for that piece of property was not a high-density commercial piece. It was a drop-off dry cleaner. It was a barber shop. It was an ice cream shop. It was to service that community, a takeout, a subway, something like that, that the residents in Waterstone could use. It went in conjunction with what was going on with Independence Village, who was going to put a bandshell there and they were going to have concerts and community activities and things like that. So it was sold to us as a package for all of that. And that's what we accepted. That's what we, that was going to be there. If he had asked for multifamily in that spot back then, I can tell you, it wouldn't have went through. We discussed it. It was all done. That, that, that part was configured. And that was as much as we were going to give for the density on that. So that commercial was in there. And so I take that in consideration. I ask to know what times change. But I still think that that area, and as we develop, is still going to need those type of services. And that area was designed for that low-intensity service to that community and for the community now to the north, which is quite dense. You know, they might want to run to a subway or drop off their dry cleaners by just going across 24 as opposed to having to go in and out of town. So we're building kind of a sense of community with both of those. And that's kind of when I, I want to see that grow in terms of that, not more housing. We also just did a master plan review. We had public comment. More multifamily was not high on the list. It was, we don't want more, more high-density type stuff. That's what our community said. Said we want to maintain that more rural look. This doesn't configure with it. This looks more like a downtown somewhere, somewhere else, not what Oxford's vision is. So, you know, I keep going through all this, going, this is exactly opposite of everything we talked about. It's opposite what people come in and say. We're going the wrong way. That's not what I want to look like. It's not what I want to see in that. When I look down Market Street, I want to see friendly market. That's what I think that community had there. And then the alternative, from what I heard the residents say, if it can't be that, then just make it like the housing that we already have there. Let's not make it substantially different than what we're already seeing in the houses in that vicinity. And if that's what the residents in that area want, I would go along with that, too. I don't think the residents in the area want to see that. I know, I don't, it's not what my master plan vision is that we just look. Yeah, I could run my points. That's, that's enough for me.
Yes. This looks better, but there can be some improvements. Number one, I, I like your chart over here, but it shows your building height. It shows three stories. Not all buildings are three stories. Can you identify which ones are three-story? For example, you call out building number seven as a garage for nine, building number six is a garage for eight. Those aren't three stories, are they?
No.
So you have a total of eleven non-garage units. Is that what I see on your chart?
They have, they have, they have garages that are not attached to their building.
Correct. They're not three-story.
No, 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 no.
So all of your buildings are not three-story?
No, but the overall, yeah, the overall.
The eleven are? The eleven residential, commercial, retail are?
In this slide, the three-story buildings are the three biggest.
Eight, nine, and 10?
The three biggest buildings. And none of them are, they're three stories by code, but they're, they're Dutch gambrels or they're dormered roofs or whatever. So they're.
I'm just trying to relate to your chart so I can get a better picture and go back to it. So buildings eight, nine, and 10 would be the three-story style homes.
Well, sort of, there are two-story townhomes on the first two stories and center hall, center hall condominiums on the third floor.
Okay. Which one of those?
None of them are three, nobody has a three-story house. That's not happening. That's, you walk into your living room.
Which buildings are three floors?
The three largest.
Eight, nine, and 10.
Eight, nine, and 10.
And I don't have, I, I have a different presentation. That was old. I was, I'm still kind of moving along.
I don't think I drew this anyway.
It's eight, nine, and 10.
So eight, nine, and 10 are the three.
Yes.
What you call out is three floors.
Correct.
Yeah.
I have a couple more questions. I just want to make some notes. You said just now, and I think you made a mistake, you said fifteen hundred square foot of retail, where you call out forty-seven hundred. I mean, that's larger retail, commercial than what you just stated.
I just meant one story.
Okay, so here's what the, let me, let me explain the, the commercial activity. The commercial activity that's in the 47 is the pool clubhouse building, which would be the bathrooms and the, and the changing room and the little, you know, the, yeah, the, the birthday party room. The general store and the, and the components in the four live-work studios, live-work condominiums. So the commer, so commercially, I'm trying to say five thousand square foot, and I know it's not, probably not enough, five thousand square feet of people that may come here from the outside to engage, which five thousand is hardly any.
Perspective buyers.
Right.
I looked at this also from, I don't think Chief has an opportunity to look at it, but trying to get fire trucks in and out between these buildings and garages. Have you laid out your fire truck scale for this?
Not yet.
So possibly number 10 and number nine and number eight are a little big. And you won't be able to turn off of Market Street in between building five, six, seven, and eight. You need to check that.
You, you, you might be right. I have to draw enough to have this conversation be worth it.
Yes.
And not enough to just.
And I have to have enough to say to you, you know, this looks good, but here's what you can do to make it better.
I am, I, I am well, well-trained at the fire truck radius template that I plug into all my type plans. And so is Jim.
There are eleven residential retail buildings, three garage buildings, forty-seven hundred square foot of retail work-liv spaces. They're not three-floor condominiums. They're only, there's, there may be three floors in those three buildings.
That's correct.
Okay. Those were my questions.
So the, the third floor of the three buildings are elevated, center hallway condominiums with no elevation changes inside the units.
We had a meeting today with, a different meeting today, and two of the people in there were work-from-home people. And, you know, we were talking about a development that's coming into, into the village, where they have residential up above, commercial down below, retail-type activities down below. And they were excited to hear that because, you know, Amazon and everything that's getting rid of, you have all your delivery foods and all that kind of stuff. Is that required anymore? But this town center reminds me of New Court News. It's a beautiful town square. A little too much density right now in some of those bigger buildings for me. But it, it models some of those cities that have beautiful downtown. It's almost like you'd have a little pub in the center.
I wasn't going to bring that up.
Well, you don't have a liquor license yet.
Yeah. We were going to talk about liquor, tobacco.
There's none available.
Yeah. Or hookah bars or, or anything else. So.
Yeah.
I, I worry about one thing from an architect planning standpoint, and it's that, you know, it could be, it could be less dense than this. It could be less intense as. When it gets too diffuse, it's unconvincing and fails. So if it gets too dense, maybe it's a, you know, a problem, too, and the fire trucks can't go and people can't park. But there is a, there is a, there's a gauge in there that if we miss it.
Yeah.
Is out.
Okay. Thank you.
I like the marketplace concept. I like the safety pass that you have, drawing everything together on the drawings. Looking at the residential usage with those outdoor garages and the way people are today, if they don't want to put the car in the garage, where's the car going to end up? Loading zones for getting things in and out of the, the homes and where the cars are going to park. I don't know if that's going to be an issue. When I saw the swimming pool, I, I, the next thing I thought, well, what's going to manage that? Is there going to be a, a fit, a mini fitness center there that people can come and exercise and do things and have the pool? And I, I looked for a little bit more than just the pool. For a marketplace where a resident could ride their bike down, walk down, jog down, use the fitness center, have the pool available, have the little area there. And the store, when I, you talked about different concepts of store. When it said the general store, I, I was envisioning a, a little bit larger store than what you talked about and carrying look more items than just a small fifteen hundred square foot store.
You, you might be right. I mean, I, I'm thinking resort areas like Lexington, Michigan. I'm thinking of Potaski, Charlevoix, just a little, just a little convenience mark with independent, you know, no label, no, no Speedway, 7-Eleven.
Well, in the back of my mind, you've got what's across the street. You've got Myers.
Yeah.
You've got so much, you have legacy right there. So you have a lot of things in the area within a mile, mile and a half away.
I'm glad you brought that up because the legacy is a, is a, is a part of the community now and there's, and there's no turning back. And, and we don't want to cannibalize. I don't want to propose cannibalizing anything that they are bringing online. And I think it's a great place. So I'm, I, I, like I said, I'm threading needles. And, and I know the community, you know, I'm going to tick off some people with proposing this kind of density. And other people are going to say, this is exactly what I love. And there's going to, I, and I don't even know if I'm going to propose it. I mean, I, I'm here just to, to say, hey, this is, to me personally, knowing the area, the people, the demographic, the town, having this much inside information about it, this is what felt instinctive. Might be too many units. They might be too small. They might be too big. This is what feels right, especially knowing what's going on in the marketplace of housing. And I'm not talking multi-residential. I mean, that's, that, when we go to the condo side of things, these are, these are the fit and finish of, of condominiums of this scale are higher than single-family, you know, speculative housing. I mean, they're not, they're, they're, they're a level up.
Well, I've, I've been in about three meetings the last four or five days, within the township and without the township. And I, what I've been hearing is. the township and without the township. And I, what I've been hearing is commercial on the main floor, residential above. Whether it's multi, and, and you're talking the same concept, the village is talking the same concept, Orient's talking the same concept, Rochester's talking it. So it's out there. It's moving.
Oh, yeah. And, and if the intensity of commercial gets too great and gets too entisive for the, for the rest of the township, or for the village, or for Lake Orient, or for, then that's another, that's a, that's a negative. We don't want to bring traffic in to the center of Waterston. I mean, that's a, I think that's a killer on the, on the community public hearing aspect. It just doesn't, I, I think, so we're trying to, trying to make it like, like I said, it's, it's kind of playing both cards. And it's, but that, but like you said, health clubs and gyms and things, sandwich shops might work. I'm afraid of some of the things, like, I'm afraid of, of some things that might, the brew pub, and the brewery, and the bar, that's, that's not going to work. That's not going to fly publicly, I don't think. I wouldn't propose it.
I don't want to see that, though.
I wouldn't propose it.
Well, first thing, though, I, I believe this is a little too dense myself. All right. Thought, when I first saw it, that there's insufficient commercial based on how things transpired with the previous discussion on these parcels. But the one thing we have to understand is, whatever commercial aspect they want to apply to this, you can't deter, you can't just...
No.
Determine what that's going to be unless your investment group are going to specifically own, manage, and run the, the commercial properties. If you're going to put a general store in there, and they're going to run it and own it and all that, I, I can't believe that spot. That's going to be probable.
But the PUD could define it, and could exclude it, and things like that. But yeah, you're right.
If somebody wants to come in and put in a shoe store instead of a grocery store, what are you going to do? Tell them no?
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, that, I'm, I'm just saying, we can't sit there and determine what's going to be in there, other than the liquor component. But he can lay out whatever he wants here, and we can be happy with a coffee shop, a bakery, or whatever, small general store and all that, but it's going to be the, the entrepreneur that comes in and looks at that and say, hey, I don't want to do that. I want to do this. And your group is not going to sit with an empty storefront if somebody comes in there to want to utilize the space for a specific need or purpose.
No, but they would run a 1,500 square foot general store selling eggs as a lost leader.
I'm just saying, it's, I just don't think it's relevant for us to determine what's going to be in those commercial buildings, because we don't know. It's going to be up to those individuals who decide what makes sense to them. But I just think, based on the conversations that occurred before, it's a little bit too dense on the residential and not enough on the commercial.
Yeah, so I'll just reiterate, I think it's too dense, too. I love your buildings, and I think the designs are really nice. I really do.
Thank you.
I like it a lot. I think it is too dense. It, it does have to go through PUD, and I don't really see that the way it's set up at the moment's maximizing any green space for those two parcels. So I guess, from what I've heard so far, you know, it's a little dense.
Agreed.
And a little more commercial. Tom?
You know, I looked at the plan, but like if the pool was more, you know, on the opposite side of the street side, and then you took those areas where that is located, I really liked the conversation where, because I, I meet so many people today that work out of their homes. It's ridiculous.
Yeah.
And when you could have a small, practical-sized, professional-type space where somebody can then live there, too, they don't even have to drive anywhere that day. They get up in the morning, and next thing you know, they're meeting a client. They can parallel park out in front, have some appointment times, and then still have business in their activity with their own home. I'm for that. If you could take some of that street design portion where you've kind of taken some of that and used it for the other stuff, and did more of the, the housing with office, professional-type space with it, or whatever their business may be, you know, I don't care if it's a tax guy or whoever. And I'm not talking about doctors and dentists and all that. I meant like, you know, professional people that work can do contractual things for other companies out of their own space. So even an architect. But, but that would suit, that would suit me more than to give the, and then give the opposite side, you know, like towards the golf course and stuff, a little better break, you know what I mean, and then put your other stuff.
You might be right. I, you know, the pool was a thought, it was, it was on the south. I was trying to get like, you know...
People use pools now for therapy and everything else. I'm, I'm not against that part of it, for residents that live there.
My thought the whole time was, how do you activate this street so that somebody that's taking a walk with their kids after dinner, doing the stroller, taking the jog, or just going, walking the dog, how could, you know, they're all going to converge into the center and then pass by each other and go the other way. Are there pause points? Are there benches? Are there, you know, is there a shade tree? Is there a place to sit and chat? That's, and if it was activated so that it didn't feel like you were standing in, in somebody's front yard of their house, like they are everywhere else in the neighborhood.
I like that boulevard portion you had.
Yeah, they're there.
That was great.
And we put a stop sign there, it's slow traffic. But that's the idea. The idea was, people are going to see each other socialize. I don't know how much commercial activity it can support.
I think you got room for a little more.
Easy study.
Right, maybe.
Mr. Spitz?
Yeah, I guess my, my points are not much different than anybody else's, but you're walking a fine line, or trying to walk this fine line, because when we're talking commercial, and I agree it's too dense and we need a little bit more commercial, but they're going to pull people from the outside, you know, because otherwise, who in their right mind's going to put a commercial facility in there that's not going to be successful? No businessman's going to come in and say, I want to put X, Y, or Z in that commercial location. That's not going to make money. And they're going to want support outside of the people in Waterston. They are. And they're going to advertise for people outside of Waterston. They're going to be bringing people in. There's going to be more traffic through there. That's, to me, is realistic, but you're walking that fine line, because I understand the residents don't want a lot of traffic in there. I can understand that perspective, too. But to be successful, we have to be realistic. People are going to be coming from the outside. Can we get them maybe to use the pass and ride their bikes? We might. There might be a way to do that, where you have more bike passes, and then you're getting more people riding their bikes from the community in there to do that versus all the car traffic. But you're going to get more people volume in there with the more commercial you put into that location.
I, I...
Overall, I like the concept. I'd like to see more commercial, but we might get some pushback from the residents and the community, because you're walking that fine line.
It is a fine, fine, fine line. And, and I don't want to see, I, I want this for Waterston. I don't want this for, you know, the township as a whole, because of, because I know what the people feel about that drive-in. You know, you're, you're off the main drive. You're into Boulder Point before you're into Waterston.
I agree.
And so...
But as, you're a business owner, right?
Yeah.
You're going to want to be as successful as you can be. You're not going to go in there and put a business in there, I don't believe. It just breaks even. You don't want to just pay the bills. You know, you want to be a successful business person and make money.
You're right. Which is why this proposal has that little general store that is a lost leader. It is similar to some of the, well, I won't get into it. It's a similar, it's a lost leader, set up to not, to not profit, but to, to be a marketable little institution in the middle of town. I don't, I mean, obviously, you're not going to make, there's, there's, what is it, 3,000 people that live in the Waterston? You're not going to make...
No, you're not. I, I love the concept of the office or commercial up front and the residential behind it. I think it's a great idea for the, the small individual entrepreneurs, or somebody with a single, a small business. I, I love that idea, and maybe Tom's right, you just expand a little bit on that.
More of that. I, I might agree with that.
You know, that might be a way to kind of walk that fine line a little more. But you're still going to get traffic from people coming in to visit with them.
A little, a little bit.
So to help you garner your ideas about how maybe to change it or tweak it, or what have you, I know we've, I know for sure, I've got a couple residents from just up the road. Do you guys have any input?
Yes, we certainly do. We have so much traffic already.
Yep. Can we have you come up to the mic and just, so we can get it on the recording?
Big voice, so you can hear.
Yeah. Just state your name and...
Okay.
What your comment is.
I'm Marilyn Grant, and I live in Stony Lake Village. And that development that he's showing is right at the edge of our street. That street runs from Market out to 24. And we get so much traffic already coming in from 24. That, and they speed through there, even though the speed limit's only 25, they come flying through. And the last thing we need is more traffic.
Yeah.
And it's going to happen, no matter what you put on that parcel. But if it becomes commercial, and it draws people from other parts of town, and I think you are so right, people aren't going to go move in there for commercial reasons unless they're going to make money. And they're going to have to advertise and bring folks in from outside Waterston to do that. It's going to even make the traffic worse than what we already have. So I don't...
But you don't have an option. If somebody wants to come in there and put...
I know.
A McDonald's or something in there, it, it'll conform.
I don't see that there's any commercial solution that's going to help the traffic.
If somebody wants to come in there with a commercial opportunity, forget what he's providing, if somebody, it's going to create traffic.
I know. I, I think residential is better for the parcel rather than commercial, but I don't want to see it dense like that diagram showed either. So I don't think that we really need commercial. We've got Meyer right up the road, and 24 is already going to develop like crazy. It's, I've seen it happen in other cities. So I don't know that, do you want me to punch something on the laptop to stop that from?
Just a pad, just a space block.
Okay. So anyway, I don't know that commercial is a good solution at all. Because first of all, I mean, I like the idea of having a little ice cream store and stuff like that in there, but you can't control that. You know, you can't say that that's the only kind of business it's going to allow.
Absolutely.
And so it's going to bring in, like you said, you know, maybe McDonald's or something like that. We don't want that. I don't think anybody in Waterston wants that kind of commercial. And I know those of us in Stony Lake Village don't want any more traffic coming down our street.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Mary Ann Keynes. I'm now the president of the Stony Lake Village Condo Association, and I'm here with a few of my other folks and, and other representatives from the Waterston community. We thank you for the presentation. However, I think my mind is just spinning a little bit, because that is a really high-density, aggressive plan for what I see as two very small parcels of land. The swimming pool is a wonderful idea, but I don't think you're familiar with the area that we live in, because I have 50 ducks, 100 geese, and four deer right now that would love to make that swimming pool their home. And there was no overprotection. That fencing would be jumped by the, by the deer, and that pool would never stay clean. When you're so close to the lakes, you're going to get the wildlife. And so the swimming pool aspect, as well as we look at this development as being part of the Waterston community, and they would be another member of the Waterston community, the 14th community under the Waterston umbrella, they would have to pay the association dues. I don't know how the liability of having a swimming pool and all this would play, how they could just keep it for their residents only and not have other Waterston residents want to use it. It really brings up some gray area that would have to be looked at as far as being a Waterston member, and the rules, and the regulations, and the dues, what burden that might have on the rest of the Waterston communities outside of this one. I look at this graphic, and I see wonderful pedestrians walking across crossways and cars stopping for them. I hate to tell you, reality is, those two pedestrians would be dead, because people do not stop at the stop signs. Our speed limit is 25, and they go 45, 50. You know, how many times have I been before you saying, we have traffic issues, we have speeding issues, someone's going to get killed someday, and it's just going to be very sad, because we've tried to stop it. But because Stony Lake Drive is a county road, they won't let, let us put speed bumps in, they won't let us lower the speed limit to 15 miles per hour, they won't let us do this, they won't let us do that. So M dot, you know, because it's a county road, we don't have the control we would like over that. And this addition would bring additional traffic flow through the area, not only on Stony Lake Drive, but I see Market Street. But I would fear for those people going from one side to the other. Having the commercial versus residential, you know, this is a really fine line. We've talked about this several times. There really is a big question mark. We could go with residential, but we certainly wouldn't want the density. These are two small parcels, and the amount of condos or homes, it would have to be way more limited than what these, this proposal and the previous proposal had shown. Whether we do commercial, it would be nice, but it's seasonal. You know, we'd love to have an ice cream parlor, or like you said, a coffee shop, or a little bakery, you know, something that quaint little town type of boutiques. But will that draw on enough business to make them profitable? We certainly don't want, like Mr. Spitz said, we don't want traffic coming in off M24. We don't need any additional people in Waterston. So, you know, there's, you know, the cons and the pros in regards to that. But looking, you know, to have a town center would be nice, but looking at the large swimming pool, how would these people have access to some of the lakes? For instance, I'm off Lake Dules. That's a private lake, but Stony Lake is a public lake. But where they're located, they would have to go through Stony Lake Park to get to that lake. And then on the Waterston parcel that borders up to Waterston Lake, you know, there's concerns for those residents that have spent a lot of money doing their shorelines along Waterston Lake. And how would they feel about these people using that lake, or what, you know, you, even though there are boundaries within Waterston, because each community has their own responsibilities, those are gray areas. And you can't, you know, when you deal with the public, they're going to cross those boundaries. And I didn't see in the proposal any lighting off Market Street. You know, it's going to be very important for pedestrians. If there's going to draw more pedestrian traffic, how do we keep those folks safe? So, you know, I, I think it opens up some discussion, but what I've seen tonight with this proposal, it's just, I feel, and hopefully I'm representing a lot of our, our Waterston and our Stony Lake Village residents, is that it's just way too high-density. We would be worried about the traffic. Like I said, the wildlife would love that swimming pool. I didn't see really, as Commissioner Rosner Myers had mentioned, any of the natural setbacks. It looks like everything was right. I mean, every inch of that parcels of land were, were going to be used. I'm, I'm glad to see, like you said, the design is more traditional. What was previously brought to us was more of a modern flair, and Waterston does not have a modern flair. It has more of a traditional, some of the, one of the communities is more nautical-looking, so we kind of wanted to fit into, to what we have. But I think I've gone over some of the salient points that I'd like to discuss, and I don't know if any of my fellow co-owners would like to say anything. Thank you for your time.
I'm going to stand back away from this mic, because I have a projected voice. I don't even think I need it. My name is James Spencer. I also live in the Stony Lake condo complex, the village. I'm not going to repeat a lot of this stuff. We, we've heard it a lot. There is a couple things I want to mention, and let, to the, to the board, whatever, my first time here. I do agree, it's too dense. The gentleman here that made the presentation said he looked back on what the original residents wanted. If he really had that in mind, it wouldn't be this dense. I understand, too, as a builder, you have to have a certain ROI in any investment you make. If that goes down below a line, it's not worth putting the money into it. I agree with what you said, I guess you're the chairman, that you can't dictate what businesses are coming in. You need to know what those businesses are before you even make those stores. How much footage do they want? What kind of stores are they going to be in there? Are they going to be of the kind that the people of Waterston and Stony Lake, you know, are looking for? The biggest thing I'd like to say is, I just found out about this meeting less than 24 hours ago. There are so many people in homes in Waterston and in Stony Lake Village. Where are they? I'd like to hear their point of view. I think you'd like to also hear more of their points of view. I'm sure they've got some things they'd like to say, too. I'd like that invitation. The gentleman wants to come back with another review. Fine. I'd like the invitation to be sent to everybody in both those communities, and have them have the opportunity to be here like I was lucky to be here. I took off a meeting today to be here for my business. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. When there's a preliminary plan presented to the commission, that gets presented to the community, so the community can have their input on the preliminary plan. This is just really conversation between the developer or the landowner and the planning commission.
I understand, but I think the gentleman who gave the presentation would also like to have that input and that consideration into what he's trying to present.
Just to the chair, we're coming to the community before we come back to this. Just to the chair, we're coming to the community before we come back to this board. So, this is just a discussion, because we've been here before and we've done it. The next meeting is Waterstone and the developer alone, without the board, just so, just to be clear.
Callie?
Couple questions for the applicant, or for the pre-application applicant here.
Peter, she'd like to have you stay up there, she has a couple questions.
The density you have for the housing, what's the density?
65, 65 units. I don't know what is per acre, I guess.
For each of those particular properties? There's two different lots?
I don't, I didn't do, I didn't look at it separately, I don't know.
So, you don't know the density?
Not between the two. I know that there's 65 condominiums proposed.
And then 65 condominiums, and how many square feet of commercial?
5,000, roughly.
5,000 square feet. Do you know the overall density of Waterstone?
I do not.
You do not. So, if it was, the overall density was four units per acre?
Per acre or something, it's probably a lot less than that, I would assume.
Right. So, it would be less than that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that's why, I just wanted to clarify those questions, just to see, you know, going in, if you actually knew that the layout of it. I do know that a commercial investor knows his property, they have requirements of what they're going to put in. You're not going to get a fast food restaurant on a road like that because of the draw. They have requirements as to how much traffic has to go down the front per day, and things like that. So, that commercial investor knows. So, that limits that property to the type of business that would cater to a small boutique-type place. So, the situation, being in the planning commission, you know, when that area was prepared for commercial, we had an anticipation of the type of commercial that would go in there based on the fact that it's off the main road. And that limits what goes in there, which kind of limits density and the traffic and all that. Because, you know, the pole has to be there from 24, you're not going to get that that far down. So, that's the moderator, as you say, that we had anticipated when we picked commercial for there. And like I said, we discussed what types of things could go there. And then, the overall density of Waterstone can't be exceeded, in my opinion. I mean, we have an expectation of what that community looks like, and to come in, you know, after the fact and try and change it so radically, if I were in that area, I'd be upset. Whatever the overall density is, I wouldn't exceed it. There's no reason to. Our master plan, you know, that we went through, didn't talk about increasing density like that. And so, you know, from an opinion from my side, whatever comes in there can't exceed the overall density that we have there now. If it exceeds that, why would we do it? Nothing has been given to us to say that we absolutely have to have that.
Well, I think when I went through the discussion of a master plan development, and where the inspiration for this master plan development, I wasn't here for the meetings, and the, it may have, the reason it's commercial and it's next to the duplex development and the, and the senior living density, and it's Zone C1, is so that it looked like, like whatever's on the left, in terms of its curb appeal. It had parallel parking, it had...
What are you talking about? What document?
The density that they had imagined.
Who is they?
The people that recorded the master plan, the master deed in 1999.
99, it didn't look, I'll show you four master deed-type concept plans from that area. One of them had a horse stable.
This is the county registered deed. I pulled it out of the...
The deed isn't, there is no development plan there, what concept plan you're talking about?
I'm talking about this right here. This is page 61 of the Master Declaration of Restrictions for Waterstone, signed and recorded with the county in 1999. That drawing shows the density anticipated by somebody, and it's the density that we're proposing. And it's the same basic layout that we're proposing. That's, I'm not, I'm not trying to be contentious, I just went back and said, "You said, why can't somebody bring us what was, what was assumed to go in?" I went and found this and drew this. That's it. And I just figured that nobody's going to build, nobody's going to build 50,000 square feet of retail in the middle of Waterstone. You could, you couldn't support 2,500 square feet of retail in the middle of Waterstone. You just couldn't do it. There's no traffic. So, and we don't want to bring in new traffic. So, in order to fill out the rest of the usable land in a density that was something that was in the vein of celebration, which this development was based on, would be something like that, and something like that. Now, 65 units might be too many, they might be the wrong size, I might have to get a market study and find out that everybody wants 2,700 square foot condominiums that has a place in Potaski and a place in Florida, or a place here and somewhere else. I don't know that for sure, but I know that when you follow the general aspects of development in and around this region, that's the density that fits without being crazy. There's no, there's no underground parking garages that go two decks below grade like you're going to find in these, in these towns. There's lots of open space. I never drew a floor plan for any of this, this is a 50-scale drawing, this is as far as I ever got, but that's, that's what it can support. Maybe it's 50 units, maybe it's 70 units, I don't know. But I know that, I know that, that that's the, that every ounce of my 30 years of practicing architecture tells me that that little, that part of Market Street with the built-in parallel parking is supposed to look like that. That's what I know. Now, whether or not that's what the community wants, or isn't what they want, that's, you know, then we're done, it's no big deal.
That's not what the minutes say, that's not what the history says, that's not what the discussion on planning commission was.
Yeah, well, I wasn't, like I said, I had, I had arrived in Michigan in 1997, and I hadn't come to Oxford until...
We were still doing approvals in 2004, 2005, 2006 that don't look anything like what that master deed you see looks like. So, obviously, changes occurred.
Well, nobody's proposed anything on it either, it's vacant commercial land.
But that doesn't mean that we approved that master deed and it went through us, that's not what, I mean, we had Waterstone, and we had Independence Village come after, that's what I'm saying. I don't know that the master deed is a binding document for us.
I don't, I'm not assuming to say it's a binding document, I just said, I tried to find the inspiration when you said, "Figure out what it was proposed originally," and I came back with what I think is proposed originally.
Right. So, I think what, you know, you came back with, it looks good, there are a lot of aspects people like of it on this commission. I think the overall response is it's still too dense. Jack had it pretty much nailed on the head, you know?
Got it.
Really on the right path, still a little too dense. I don't think anybody disagrees with that, correct? Still too dense.
I don't think, I think it's so far off.
All right. You think it's so far off? It's got a mix of commercial and residential, or, I don't know, maybe there's something else that you want to come back. I thought it kind of was pretty good, personally. Too dense, but pretty good.
This is rezoning, just in terms of procedure, we just went through the criteria for rezoning. This is, it was supposed to be C1 or C2 or whatever it is. We just did standards for rezoning that we have to go through.
Yep.
So, we'd have to, it had to, to go through those standings, we'd have to make the finding that the master plan has changed or circumstances have changed, the ink isn't dry yet. So, that process needs to be done to actually determine if a rezoning is appropriate. So, then, once that rezoning is established, then we'd be establishing baseline zoning, which would still have to go through our process of our zoning criteria.
Right. He's trying to get a flavor for the concept, is what he's trying to establish, I think.
Right. And I'm saying, based on what? We've discussed, and what our ordinance says, and what our master plan is, that is such a divergence than what we've been talking about the last year.
That's what it's zoned. That's what C1 reads. So, and I think that's abysmal. So, but, you know...
No, that's what, we have to understand what the reality could be. That could go up there.
On four acres. And we, okay, he's showing pictures that...
It's not realistic, but I'm saying that's could go up there.
Let's do apples and apples.
I understand, but...
See what it looks like in three acres and meeting all the setback requirements.
Right.
Then we can talk.
I was proposing that we would come through as a PUD with public benefit, that's what I was proposing, so it wouldn't really matter what the underlying zoning was.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Yes.
Okay. Just a couple of things for your, for feedback, for your considering a plan and a future proposal possibly. So, it is zoned, currently local commercial. Future land use map identifies it as village commercial. And I think that, I would like to say, based on the square footage listed as the commercial space, I think that that is misleading. I think that the retail space is actually 1,400 square feet. I don't think a pool and live work can be counted towards commercial. So, I think that coming in as a PUD and claiming public benefit, the ordinance is very clear that public benefit has to extend further than just economic development. And so, I think that that's something that should be taken into account as to what other amenities might be incorporated into this area. And then, with that, the concern that I have that would, you know, thinking about a site plan review and what would, what we would consider is that I do have concerns about the circulation of the sites and access to the sites. And it, it's not just emergency access, but most of the proposals, or most of the parcels and the site orientation is really dead ends, and I think that that would be a concern for not only the residents, not only emergency vehicles, but also for the residents and the flow of traffic through the site. I think that, I think that it reaches the design standards that you all were talking about, and it looks really nice, but the bottom line, I think, is for the, for the PUD consideration would be to, should, the ordinance states that you should try, the density plan shall meet the standards of the lot size, lot width, and setbacks normally required for the underlying zoning district. And I think that as it's established, commercial and proposed to be commercial going forward, you should, you should really consider that.
Thank you.
Did you get the feedback you needed?
I got it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Okay. Let's move into item 11, Communication Committee Reports. Economic Development Committee?
Nothing to report.
Ordnance Review Committee?
We had a meeting today, and according to what I understand from last night's meeting, the rezoning and the solar components that we had presented to the Township Board have then been accepted for first reading, and now will be going in for a second reading. So, they're moving in the direction of possible adoption now for the township. We also took a great look at something that's of concern lately, and it's called food trucks. And we're looking at what we would try to put together as a proposal for an ordinance for regulation on that. They appear to be a popular item anymore. And we're trying to follow the format of what was originally presented as to the priorities of what people wanted to have done first, but then we kind of changed it a little because things jumped into place that were starting to happen in the community. And we still want to look into signs. We're going to next have some efforts in the sign ordinance again, but we want to get the food truck thing. There's another event this weekend that's going to be food truck, something, something, so, which I just found out about today. And, you know, they're regulated by the County Health Division, too, so there's a lot behind it all, but we need some things in our own community to help regulate how that works. So, that's the direction we're in right now, but we're moving along. We're going to have another meeting in a couple of weeks to have further discussion.
Okay.
So, we're trying to get things in order.
Where are we on allowed uses?
Well, that got sidetracked slightly. That's what I meant about priority-wise.
So, that got dropped even after...
No, didn't get, no, don't say it got dropped.
I'm going to get beat up here.
No, you're not going to get beat up. It didn't get dropped, it just, we're still trying to follow the format of that priority list, but we did move a couple in front of it.
So, who made the determination that that's a bigger priority?
The comments that came to us were like, "Okay, what are we doing with this, and what are we doing with this?" So, we said, "Okay, we'll take a look at it." It was just general conversation with people in the office.
But the residents have come and said it's a problem, and you guys said that you were going to prioritize it.
A couple of elected officials came to us, too, and asked us some things, and we're just trying to coordinate everything together. We're trying to move along as fast as we can, I'll be honest.
I'll tell everyone that came and spoken was promised that it would be put up there, that it's now been put back up.
No, it's not really been put up. We did do work on it already, and we're presenting some changes for it. We just had another discussion today. We have another proposal with, you know, the ag area in particular, by the way, that we took and made changes to that you will see soon. We talked about the draft that we had today, and we're going to present it with changes that were made for uses permitted and special land use and stuff like that. We still, we're still working on it, and we'll be bringing that to you quickly. We concentrated in some of those areas first, as far as the uses go. So, we didn't drop it, we're just kind of implementing some other stuff all in at the same time, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Planner and engineering reports. Carl Alwortman, anything?
We're busy. There's a lot going on.
That's good.
Yeah. We're considering a site plan right now for the Grace Senior Living, which you should have...
They're hoping to come in two weeks.
Yeah, yeah. Soon. We'll have some discussion on that.
Okay. I'm going to bust into your report to add this, too, about that. Oakland County's hosting a meeting about that, they want, Lake Orion wants to rezone a part of that, from residential to office. And there's a general meeting on August 14th, that any of us can attend. In reference to that, if we want to make comment, in a sense, it borders our community. It's in our community.
Well, it's in both, right? I mean, it's really in both communities.
Yeah, that use in Orion Township has to be, it's a special use under office professional.
Right.
Mr. Sharp?
We were granted approval by the Township Board to revise the engineering design standards, kind of like your master plan, only a little more technical. If you have any comments, one that comes to mind might be length of cul-de-sacs that we commonly deal with, or any other things. Just please bring that to my attention. Our plan is to kind of work, work through that over the next few months and make it active, you know, maybe at the beginning of the year or something. So, you have time, but if there's anything engineering-related or that you see through my reviews over the, over the past, past few years that comes to mind, then just send me an email, give me a call, whatever it is, and we can certainly look into it and maybe